I'd like to call the Village Board meeting to order. This is number 3,068. Today is February 10th, 2014. Clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy?
Present.
Kim?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Semple?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Boss?
Here.
Very good. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you. Welcome, everyone. At this point, we need to do approval of the minutes from January 27th. Do I have a motion?
No, moved. Second.
Motion by Boss. Second by Abernathy. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Boss?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Very good.
We'll close the floor and move on to presentations and awards. There are none tonight. Number seven, there's no public hearings, which brings me to the Mayor's Report, number eight on the packet. There's no motions under my Mayor's Report. The only thing I would bring to the board's attention and the public's as well is the Mayor's Cup Math Challenge that will be held on March 9th. It'll be a Sunday afternoon, registration beginning at noon over at the Mundaline High School. And this is the, what I hope to be, the first annual math competition. It's for students that live in District 120, even though they may attend another private school, and also all Carmel students are certainly invited as well. We're going to have three divisions, middle school, junior varsity, and varsity. And it's just a way of celebrating the community of math students we have. We have thousands of math students here, and I kind of liken math to, in real estate, there's a saying that goes, "Under all is the land." And in the world of future innovation in our culture, I think under all is math. I think any innovation in the future, anything remotely technical, a good base in math will be huge. And so we want to foster that community in our education, and I'm lending the office of the mayor to that effort. So that's March 9th next month at Mundaline High School. At this point, let's go to trustee reports. Public Works Committee, trustee Meyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have several motions and topics to cover tonight. The first one would be a motion to authorize staff to advertise for bids for the Chicago Avenue Extension Project, and that would be in your packets, Exhibit PW-1. And so I'll make that motion.
Motion by Meyer.
Second.
Second by Sullivan. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next topic relates to well number eight, electrical rehabilitation, and that would be in your packet, PW-2. And I have two motions regarding that. The first, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract between the Village of Mundaline and Umdenstock Electric, Inc., for electric rehabilitation of well number eight.
Motion by Meyer?
Second.
Second by Semple. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll. Oh, trustee Boss?
I just want to mention, so this went out for public bid, and we only had two responders. Umdenstock was one, and the other one was for considerably more. But it was a public bid, so any Mundaline company could have bid, correct? I just want to point that out.
And Umdenstock is?
Well.
A local company?
Right. They're incorporated, but yes.
Okay. Anyone else? Clerk, please call the roll.
Meyer?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. And the next motion, still under the same topic, is a motion to authorize a purchase order for the amount not to exceed $39,100 for electrical rehabilitation at well number eight to Umdenstock Electric, Inc.
Second the motion.
Motion by Meyer, second by Semple. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Meyer?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. And the last motion I'd like to make tonight is a motion to authorize staff to solicit proposals for the rebuild of various control valves at the village water distribution facilities. And you'll find that in your packet, Exhibit PW-3.
Second.
Motion by Meyer, second by trustee Kim. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
And that would be all I have for this evening.
Thank you, trustee Meyer. Next, Finance Committee, trustee Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, we have two motions. The first is one I believe we have brought forth because we will have an abstention. It is a motion to approve payment of bills to AT&amp;T totaling $15,677.06, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Sullivan, second by trustee Boss. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Abstain.
Semple?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Second motion is a motion to approve payment of bills to trustee Boss, the amount of $80, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Sullivan, second by Meyer. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Boss?
Abstain.
Motion carries.
This evening, on our omnibus list of motions, we have a list of bills to pay totaling Two major bills to pay are to the Joint Action Water Agency, Lake Michigan Water, the amount of $190,515.20. The second major amount is a bill to Radacom, the second payment, the final payment, for our updated 911 equipment. That amount is $160,357.45. Plus somebody has a question?
I do.
Let me hear it.
I'm just curious, in this bill pay list is, we're reimbursing the mayor $125, I think? And we don't break that out because the mayor, I mean, this is just, I guess, for Doug? We don't break that out because the mayor doesn't vote? Okay. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't an oversight that we were supposed to break out payments to elected officials.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, trustee Sullivan. Next, Public Safety Committee, trustee Semple.
Yes, we can all see there's nothing on the agenda for this evening. First, I'll go to chief Sash. Go, chief, do you have any reason or need for a committee hearing or a committee meeting in the foreseeable future? Do we need to get on the docket?
Not anytime soon. I mean, maybe in March.
Do you have any major purchases coming up that we need to throw out there in advance?
That'll be part of the budget presentation.
Okay. And then, any announcements? Do you want to?
No, I actually don't have any.
Fantastic.
I refer to my colleagues.
Chief Gunther, any need for any upcoming Public Safety Committee meetings for any police matters?
No, I don't believe so.
Any upcoming purchases that you're going to need as we're winding down in this budget year?
No, I don't believe so.
And same thing, any announcements?
Tomorrow night, Women's Self-Defense starts again, another full class. And this weekend, we will be helping out at Carmel Street Sees, so, Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Fantastic. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all.
Okay. Thank you, trustee Semple. Next, Community and Economic Development Committee, trustee Boss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, before this meeting, we were in a committee of the whole meeting that ran long, and we were supposed to have a 15-minute Community and Economic Development Committee meeting. So are we going to adjourn this and go into that? Is that what the plan is? Yes?
You want to do that?
Yes.
Now'd be the time. Recession, sorry.
Recession.
So I'll make a motion to recess from this meeting so that we can have our committee of, our community development meeting.
Okay. We have a motion by Boss, second by Sullivan, to recess into another meeting. So, any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Boss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Okay. So now we need a motion to convene the Community and Economic Development Committee.
Really? I wouldn't just call it to order?
Yeah, we need a motion to convene it.
So is it only us three?
Us, you three.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to convene the Community and Economic Development Committee meeting.
Second.
Hmm.
Well, it has to be either trustee Semple or trustee Meyer.
Second.
So it's a motion by Boss, second by trustee Meyer. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Boss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
And then we have to do attendance.
Then we do roll.
Boss?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Semple?
Here.
So, this Community and Economic Development Committee meeting is for Mundaline Community Bank that wants to open up a branch at 169 North Lake Street, and they need a sign variance so that they can have an increase in the maximum combined sign area and increase in the number of permanent signs. So I'm hoping that you have your packets. And there's someone here from the community bank, if you want to, you have things you want to show us?
Yeah, because I'm, I'm trying to figure out where they're putting three signs. I think that, oh, okay.
One facing north, four facing two. I see two.
I'm Zico with Mundaline Community Bank, and I'm Charles Reister from Grunden Reister Architects. And working with the city, we are proposing a tower piece at the corner, and backlit letters on the limestone will be on the north, south, and west sides of the tower, above a clock. Those will be three clocks at each, the north, and the south, and the west. So rendering is depicting the clocks, the limestone panels, the Mundaline Community Bank, which we backlit, and then below that, some meditative information.
This backlit sign, Victor, does the back, is that backlit sign going to fit in with our sign ordinance? The way that sign is?
The sign request that are, that is being, the signage that is being requested is based on today's ordinance. At this point, I really don't know if this new sign will be in compliance. I believe it will because it's, you know, it has a downtown setting, a downtown environment, backlit. I believe so, but I'm not 100 percent confident.
It's not a box sign, then?
It's not a box sign, no.
No. It's not a box sign.
Okay, the way you said.
The letter, so it's out from the base to the front, and then the lighting is in the back.
Okay. Well, when you said backlit, I'm like, that's not just another word for box, is it?
No.
Okay. Checking.
Okay. So they will have three signs to be wall-mounted on the building, as you said, one facing north, one facing west, one facing south. The proposed signs are 43.55 square feet, limestone panels. So they exceed the maximum combined sign area. We have to increase it from 100 square feet to 130.65 square feet, and then to increase the maximum number of permanent signs from two to three. Now, won't you also, though, have directional signs for your?
There'll be some directional signs within the parking lot going, you know, one way, this way, stop, and stuff like that.
No monument signs saying?
No monument sign.
Not, okay. Okay. So anybody on the committee have any questions?
No, I just think this being part of the Wintrust Bank family, their designs are typically very classic, very timeless, and just beautiful looking.
Thank you.
It's going to be a great asset, and I love the clock tower. Thank you so much.
Could you just do me one favor, though? Could you turn that around so he could take a picture of it? Okay, you got that?
We're good.
Thank you. Trustee Meyer, do you have any questions?
No, I agree with trustee Semple.
Okay, does any, all right. So then, um, we're, I'm going to make a motion to recommend approval of a variation to Section 21.17.040 (1) (A) to increase the maximum combined sign area from 100 square feet to 130.65 square feet at 169 North Lake Street.
Second.
So.
Motion by Boss, second by Meyer. Clerk, please call the roll.
Boss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
And then I'll make a motion to recommend approval of variation to Section 21.17.040[994.57][994.57](2) (A) to increase the maximum number of permanent signs from two to three at 169 North Lake Street.
Second.
Motion by Boss, second by Meyer. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Boss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Okay, so when we come back to our regular meeting, then we will recom, will recommend to the rest of the board what we just did.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you so much.
So then I'm going to make a motion to adjourn the Community and Economic Development Committee meeting.
Second.
Motion by Boss, second by Meyer.
Mm-hmm.
Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Boss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's adjourned, and now I'll make a motion to reconvene. We just did.
Yeah, that's what we just did.
Yeah. So now I'm going to make a motion, you guys weren't paying attention. Now I'm going to make a motion to reconvene the regular meeting.
Motion by Boss?
Second.
Second by Meyer. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Boss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Village Board meeting is now reconvened. Clerk, would you please take attendance?
Semple?
Here.
Abernathy?
Present.
Meyer?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Kim?
Here.
Boss?
Here.
So we're reconvened, and trustee Boss, you can continue with the committee meeting.
Thank you.
Meeting report.
Thank you. So, under my report, we have information about the Mundaline Community Bank at 169 North Lake Street, as seen as Exhibit CEDC-1. So I'm going to make a motion to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission's meeting minutes and findings of fact.
Second.
Motion by Boss, second by Meyer. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll. Oh, trustee Sullivan.
Even though we've shown everyone out in the audience and in television land a picture of the elevations of this beautiful building, 169 North Lake Street really doesn't describe perhaps the most where this is. This is the northeast corner of Division Street and, not Division.
Yeah.
Division, okay. Division and Route 45. Used to be that old Alexon Insurance Building, which this bank, Mundaline Community Bank, presently located in Mundaline and a very good corporate citizen, has demolished that old building and is building this new facility, which is going to enhance tremendously the appearance of that corner. I'm happy to support these variances.
Thank you. Thank you for pointing that out, trustee Sullivan. I forget that everyone doesn't know where 169 North 45 is. Okay.
It's right next to McDonald's.
Got that.
Okay.
Would have been flooded. Okay. Do we have a, anybody else?
Then we have a motion and a second, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Boss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Okay. Next, I'll make a motion to accept the Planning and Zoning Commissioner's, Commission's recommendations.
Second.
Motion by Boss, second by Meyer. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Boss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Next up is a motion to authorize staff to draft an ordinance granting a special use permit to permit a drive-through facility at 169 North Lake Street.
Second.
Motion by Boss, second by Meyer. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Boss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Okay. I'd also like to make a motion to authorize staff to draft an ordinance granting certain zoning variations to 169 North Lake Street.
Second.
Motion by Boss, second by Meyer. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Boss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. And last up is, we have a new business in town, Easy Water Pure, which is located at 452 Morris Avenue, and sells water and rents water filter systems for residential and commercial areas. And again, we encourage people to support local businesses. That's why I always announce the new openings, and they are also listed on our village website. And that, I believe, is all for me tonight.
Thank you very much, trustee Boss. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming out on such a cold night and for waiting for us. Sorry, we were a little delayed.
My pleasure.
Communication and Marketing Committee, trustee Kim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have no motions tonight, but a few updates on some of our current projects. Last week, on January 30th, we had the Business Appreciation Event. We had over 130 people attend. That's about approximately 65 businesses. And that was in conjunction with Mundaline High School to showcase our business initiatives with our community. Every one of the businesses that attended got one of these marketing packets here with some of the new material that Dawn had put together. We really tried to hit home and push the message that we are business-friendly and that we are a village that truly cares about them, and that we wanted their feedback and ideas. Let's see here. As far as the branding initiative goes, the focus groups are now complete. The Branding Steering Committee is meeting this Thursday, March 13th. Was there a public meeting called?
No, not yet.
Okay, should I do that?
No, there's no public meeting that needs to be called.
Okay. This is just for, all right. And so that's going to be this Thursday on March 13th. And after that, the consultants will prepare to present to the board on, hold on one second here, during the March 10th Board of Trustees' presentation. Okay. All right, so this, this is supposed to say February 13th, that the Branding Steering Committee is meeting.
Yes, this Thursday.
Okay. Yeah, this, had it written wrong. Okay. So this Thursday, because I have it in my calendar, we are meeting. And then on March 10th, we'll present it to the entire board. Last week, on January thirtieth, we had the Business Appreciation Event. We had over a hundred and thirty people attend. That's about approximately sixty-five businesses. And that was in conjunction with Mondaline High School to showcase our business initiatives with our community. Every one of the businesses that attended got one of these marketing packets here with some of the new material that Dawn had, Dawn had put together. We really tried to hit home and push the message that we are business-friendly and that we are a village that truly cares about them and that we wanted their feedback and ideas. Let's see here, as far as the branding initiative goes, the focus groups are now complete. The Branding Steering Committee is meeting this Thursday, March thirteenth. Was there a public meeting called?
No, not yet.
Okay, should I do that, or?
No, there's no public meeting that needs to be called.
Okay, this is just for, all right. And so that's gonna be this Thursday on March thirteenth. And after that, the consultants will prepare to present to the board on... Hold on one second here. During the March tenth Board of Trustees' presentation. Okay. All right, so this, this is supposed to say February thirteenth, that the Branding Steering Committee is meeting.
Yes, this Thursday.
Okay. Yeah, this, this had it written wrong. Okay, so this Thursday, because I have it in my calendar, we are meeting. And then on March tenth, we'll present it to the entire board. There is a marketing piece being made for the Village Hall subdivision, also called the Plaza by the mayor. And it's gonna have specific information on the available property sites for future investors or people who want to open retail. And last but not least, our website project will be in Phase Two. And that'll be to update the fire department website, the police, and to showcase our available properties in a map and listing form and update the calendar. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Lots going on. That's great, okay. Next, Trustee Abernathy, Transportation and Infrastructure Committee.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing to say tonight except that I think our streets are doing a fine job. Our, our maintenance department's doing a great job with the streets with all the snow we've been having. And Mr. Boucher, do you have anything to add?
No, not tonight, thanks.
That's it? Do, how, what was it last I heard, forty-eight inches?
Oh, it's-
More than that now?
Not, it's over fifty inches.
Is it now over fifty with what we had just a couple of days ago? Yeah.
Yes, it's the third highest, as Mr. Lebado says, third highest on record since eighteen eighty-four. Third highest January month.
Wow.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Any other reports from other trustees, any other topics for conversation?
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, Trustee Voss?
First of all, could we just do this app one more time? Street Sees is this weekend so that we don't forget. It's important, a community event, and the other thing is-
Oh, come, what is Street Sees?
Street Sees is at Carmel High School. It starts at six thirty.
Six thirty.
Friday night?
Friday and Saturday.
And goes until-
Two in the morning.
Thank you.
Last bus leaves the lot, one, right, John? Or is it one? One o'clock, one o'clock, last bus leaves at one forty-five. That I know for sure.
Really? It seems like it's somewhere near.
Yeah, no. Pancake started about midnight.
And if there's no available parking at the school-
Well, there'll be no available parking as of about six o'clock, six thirty. Just plan on parking at an outlet and taking a bus over.
And where are those outlets?
Those outlets are at Ace Hardware, Franks for the Memories, and the Metro Train Station. That's where the biggest parking, amount of parking will be at the Metro Train Station.
And then they can hop on a bus.
Hop on a bus, though, constantly going all night long.
And they can get tickets at the door.
They can get tickets at the door.
That cost?
Twenty-five dollars.
Thank you.
There's a lot of places around that have tickets, though. So if you know, lot of tickets floating.
Okay.
Always a lot of tickets floating around.
Okay, well, I'll be volunteering there Friday night and Saturday night.
Ah, so will I.
The other thing is that we, us here on the board, have been getting all of these emails from some organization that is requesting that the county have English as their official language. And I'm not clear on why we are getting them, but I did talk to Diana O'Kelly, our Lake County Board rep, who said that even though I've gotten fifteen, as we have, that she has gotten exactly zero. So if there's anyone out there watching who knows who this organization is that is suggesting that we be contacted, perhaps you could help them to guide it to the right people, who would be the county board, since they're asking for county legislation.
Good.
That's all.
Anyone else? Any other topics? No? Okay, let's move on to omnibus vote items. We have items A, B, and C. Does any trustee wish to pull item A, B, or C from the omnibus? Okay, that'll be item C. Anyone else? Okay, then I need a motion to pass items A and B.
So moved.
Omnibus vote, vote items. Trustee Voss? Makes the motion, seconded by Abernathy, discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Very good, motion carries. Trustee Sullivan, item C.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, the amount of the motion to pay AT&amp;T some fifteen thousand dollars, well in excess of fifteen dollars, thousand dollars. It's been some time since I've added up the amount that we pay AT&amp;T each month. The amount seems to be getting larger again. I know we, we negotiated with them to some extent and were able to economize. I, I have a hard time coming to any acceptance of this amount of, of payments to AT&amp;T for telephone service, of course, T-one lines, and they're hooked into our controls. I think perhaps, and I, and I hate to say hire a consultant. Hurts me. But I think-
We have it on record now.
I wonder if we don't need some help in regard to dealing with more efficiency in regard to our, our hardline telephone service. That's, that's a lot of money. I need, everyone here understands what they're paying for their monthly service. Hard to compare your home or your business to what the village has in the way of telephone infrastructure. But nevertheless, I'm, I'm convinced that there are savings to be had in this regard. Perhaps worthwhile pursuing approach to researching those savings.
Yep, um, I don't know if they drive you crazier than they drive me, but, you know, we have done some things. I think what you're referring back to, we went through an audit ourselves, Mr. Flynn, along with our IT staff. I know poured through those documents a number of years ago, and I think we found a savings of forty to fifty thousand dollars at the time. And we had things like call waiting on our fax lines and all of these types of things that just, you know, you have to go through. It's painstaking. It took us, as I recall, about a year to go through that and, you know, to look for those types of things. And since that time, we've made a lot of changes, you know, really evaluated what we're, what are we doing with this? And part of what you're seeing with the AT&amp;T is, over the past probably five years, we've migrated all of our cell phones over to AT&amp;T. They used to be on several different carriers, and Public Works was one carrier, and the Fire Department was another carrier. And so there's been a consolidation of everything down into one to be able to make some sense of it, number one. Number two, we've recently gone over to Comcast because there are some efficiencies there, but also to increase our bandwidth on trying to push data. The more, you know, the more technology you get, the more data's out there, and we're trying to find more bandwidth to push between our facilities. But perhaps what we can start with is maybe providing at least a summary of sorts to the board on kind of the types of things that we, that AT&amp;T is, you know, what kind of service we have. You're right, there are T-one lines, our nine-one-one lines, over the Police Department, there's, I mean, not that many T-one lines, but a lot of lines. Squad cars now with the mobile. Yep, everything has gone mobile, and tablets that are used in the field are all on AT&amp;T. So you're right, it probably has been increased. But maybe what we start with is a summary of kind of all that stuff, and then we can kind of go from there. See if, we can also check around and see if there isn't somebody that we can, gonna help us maybe evaluate that, see what we're doing, and maybe there is a cheaper way to do it. Always worth looking at. We haven't really scrubbed it in four or five years, so.
Well, it's not a, it's not a A priority, but nevertheless.
Sure.
It's in a while. Looked at it, and I understand now, thinking back, that there was a time when we had a lot of cell company, cell phone companies that were sending us a bill to.
Right.
And they were substantial. We've consolidated AT&amp;T.
Right.
So that makes it more palatable, less, close to, between fifteen and sixteen thousand dollars. A substantial amount of money over twelve months.
Right.
And there's a, there's a way to evaluate efficiencies at the time.
Okay, do you want to make the motion, too?
Yes, I'll make the motion to pay the bill. Thank you.
Okay, motion by Sullivan? Second by Voss, discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, that takes us to, so that's it for the omnibus. Let's go to the Village Staff Reports. This is item eleven, beginning with the Village Administrator, Mr. Lebado.
I have no report tonight, but there is a need for executive session. On personnel and land acquisition.
Good. Thank you.
Uh, there is no action after, no action.
Okay, Village Clerk?
Nothing.
No report there, okay. So we will adjourn into executive session. That's the motion that we need to adjourn into exec. We're gonna recess. Okay, so I need a motion to recess into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Kim, second by Sullivan, discussion.
Do we, do we have to give the section that we're doing it?
Oh, I do, you're right. So this is a motion to recess into executive session to discuss pending litigation pursuant to-
No.
No.
I'm not done yet.
Yeah, but we don't have to do that part of it.
Excuse me, to discuss land acquisition, not pending litigation. To discuss land acquisition pursuant to five ILCS one twenty, section two C five. Also personnel pursuant to five ILCS one twenty, section two C one.
You got it, perfect.
Very good. So we have a motion and a second. All right, discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Kim?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Motion carries.